Standards, the NFPA, which is a standard-setting organization, says that we should have 16 firefighters to do all the jobs on the fire ground. For a town our size, we consider, you know, 14 on duty as being at the minimum base level for us to operate all of our, to take care of all the tasks per day, all the calls that we do. We do about 3,500 calls a year, emergency calls per year, that we need to staff people for. That's what we decide is a minimum staffing. Again, there are, when we talk about standards, they've done a standard that we should have, to be most efficient, we should have four to five personnel per piece of apparatus that we have. And if we take the three engines, the ladder, and the two ambulances, and so forth, that's where it gets us to being 16 people on duty. So, we can talk about standards, we can talk about what their requirements are when they look at it. However, we take a kind of an average and a base on what it takes for our operations to be able to handle the job that we currently do now for the town. And we've put it in our strategic plan to try and make that 14 level, and this is one step towards that 14 level toward trying to meet some of those standards.
Chief, can you hold up for a second?
Sure.
Al Baldassaro, 41 Hall Road.
Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The questions and the discussion that Chief just discussed are quite valid in terms of the standards and the numbers and so forth, but I want to take it to a more understandable level in our community, a real-life example, a hypothetical. For example, let's say you live in the north end of town, and your house catches fire, and a fire engine responds to your address. The fire engine's going to show up with two firefighters on that engine. And if there's a rescue to be performed within the dwelling, there's a real risk of whether that's going to happen in a timely manner. And I see Captain Rogers is in line, and I would ask, Mr. Baldassaro, if you would concede, and Pauline, if you would let Captain Rogers describe what happens when a fire engine staffed with two firefighters shows up at a house, dwelling fire?
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Jim Rogers, 5 Crosby Lane, captain of the fire department for 22 years. Sir, what you're referring to, first, I want to thank the town council. After the tragedy on Hemlock Street, I was the author of the after-action report for that. I wish members of the budget committee were there that night, because you would have been educated. You would understand replacement costs. You would understand staffing. You would understand how the fire department is under manned, why we are running with nine guys. It's not like private industry. When we run with nine guys, what we do is we drop down a firefighter. In private industry, you don't fill that slot for the day, the invoices fill up. For us, it's an exponential decrease of manpower. It's unbelievable. And what Mr. Dolan is referring to is a term that we use that is unheard throughout the country and not recognized by any safety standard or a third party. It's called dead manning the fire pump. So, if the fire is in the south end of town or the north end of town, we're running at nine, it's two-man engine companies. Those guys are leaving that fire truck unattended, leaving that mechanical device unattended, going into that burning building to look for whoever may be. We talk about fires all the time, but let's not talk about fires. Let's talk about emergency medical calls. Forty-six percent of the time, two paramedics and two firefighters, two ambulances are at the hospital. I give the town council exemplary credit. Many members of the town council had questions. They came to the fire station. They asked, they wanted to educate themselves so they could vote on this to the best of their ability, and I give them the best credit. Councilor Farrell did a great job just explaining the overtime cost. The overtime cost, we don't have time to discuss it tonight, because we need to talk about it another time, but it's clear that you're really not getting it. You're really not getting what the coverage is, what it means to us, what it means to have bodies on duty, okay? At the Hemlock Street fire, what that did was that illustrated exactly what the manpower, not just for fire emergencies, but a lot of different emergencies through town. We also looked at, by putting, you know, three guys down at Station Two to eradicate that two-man engine company, we would be able to put, almost 35% of the time, a third ambulance in play. What does that mean? By putting a third ambulance in play, that means revenue-wise, if you want to talk revenue, that's about another $45,000. How do we figure that out? We receive mutual aid about 120 times. We're getting an ambulance from Derry. What does that mean? That means we're losing revenue. But that's secondary, that's the backseat. The front seat is whoever needs an ambulance in this room, when there's two ambulances out, that means you're waiting 16 minutes. You are waiting 16 minutes for the ambulance. If voters tonight, you have a choice. If you want to wait the 16 minutes, vote this down. If you don't want to wait the 16 minutes, and you want to up the chances of having a third ambulance respond when a loved one needs that, I urge you to vote this in. If there's any other questions, I'd love to ask.
For the record, Al Baldassaro, 41 Hall Road. I, first of all, want to thank the budget committee for standing up for the taxpayers. I'm going to tell you why in a second, okay? It's a tough decision. Your vote has nothing to do with the fire department, and this vote ain't about the fire department. God bless them. Yeah, they do do a good job, okay? But my question is for the chief. Chief, I'm going to put on my state rep hat here, because a lot of us at the State House have issues on the national codes, and we have issues on the national standards. And the reason why we do is, can you answer me, the standards that we're going by, are they're the same for New York City, for Boston, for California, Los Angeles, as they are for here? Is that correct?
As far as the standards go, yes.
Okay. Then my next question is, do we, and I've been in other towns and stuff, that we all have, what do you call that, agreement? That we come to aid for each?
Mutual aid agreement.
Mutual aid. Now, if there is a major fire like we had here in Londonderry, we've had one, God bless the family, I feel bad, but the bottom line is, didn't we get mutual aid that night?
Yes, we, but the time limit it takes to get mutual aid is the issue.
Okay. My other, next question is, I understand the time limit, but the time limit, isn't it the same if you're, if the fire's in South Londonderry, from our vehicles coming from North Londonderry, to go help with the two firemen there, to help the other two stations?
The same time?
We have three stations, right, in Londonderry?
Depending on where the location of the incident is, the time limits change. First response, there's a first response time, which is from the south station or the north station, wherever the call is. They're there within the normal time of four to six minutes. For the third station to get there, it's a matter of travel time and distance.
Okay. Besides that fire, and have you, are there any major, I mean, I don't see the sky falling in the last few years here in Londonderry, because we lacked four firemen. I'm just wondering, have there been any major issues here in the town besides the fire, when everyone else come there in the rescue, after they assessed that fire?
I don't know what you're trying to get at.
I'm trying to get at here, Fire Chief, that we're using national standards. You're telling everyone in this room that you want to comply with national standards, when we know the national standards are basically for big cities, and little cities want to be like the big cities.
A national standard is data-driven. They know how many people it takes to do the jobs on a fire ground or an emergency scene. Captain Rogers said it. I mean, take a motor vehicle accident out on the highway. How many people does it take to use the tools that we're just talking about buying? Takes at least two people to use the tools. Takes people, two people to at least provide coverage with there. Two people to treat patients. We're up to six. We're up to 10. On the average, to go to a motor vehicle accident on the highway, we take everybody here.
Okay. Another question is?
So, that's 10. And national standards are, again, and she said it, it's data-driven. It's not by the population of the town, it's not by, it takes what it takes to do the job. That's why it's called a national standard. No matter whether you're in New York, New York can put, you know, 20 fire engines on a fire. They also have 100-story buildings, too, that we don't have. But a fire doesn't tell you what it needs. We know that, and we have it all here. The biggest fire in the country is the one- and two-family dwellings, by far, throughout the country. And everybody has them. We have them, New York has them, Boston has them. It's that primary. And they're saying it takes that many people to do the job. We're trying to get to that standard. We're not there yet. We're trying to get there.
How many hours a week do you use work? Didn't we change it from 42 to 36 or 38?
No, we went from 48 to 42.
Forty-eight to 42? Okay. I thank you for your information here, but if I may, the national standards, we have issues on this, and we're trying to correct that here in the national code that we're complying with in the state of New Hampshire, because none of us can go on and open it up and look at it. This here, I was hoping to keep the budget open, so I was prepared to make a motion tonight to put that forefunding into the budget and not have any other additional costs, and then leave it to the town manager to come up with a number. Of course, that's too late. But the bottom line here is seven cents on the tax rate, when I know he used, not, if you, the captain said, if you're from the, living in North Londonderry, you know, and it takes a little longer. Well, you've got Litchfield, I've got Manchester, right up the street. We have Hudson, we have all these little towns around that will support. That's why with the great Londonderry firefighters that we have in this town, we haven't had it. What I could see, as a bystander and somebody who's familiar with operational standards, I don't see the breakdown. I was hoping you added in a budget for more, to maybe bring on call fires if there's a large fire, at $13, $14 an hour, that are already trained for those emergencies, rather than just having people sit there all day. So, thank you, Budget Committee, for doing the right thing.
Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. I object to this article because of the construction of the article, and I brought this up to the town council at the budget meeting. The overtime should not be included with the funding of four firemen, and I was told by Mr. Karen that that overtime will be every year. It's going to be a continuing thing. If you add four firemen, you're going to have a higher overtime. So, I don't know how much that's going to cost you next year and the following year in your tax budget, but right now, if you approve this article, your taxes are up $4.78, so keep that in mind, because there's a few more articles coming.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, just for clarification, the reason there's overtime in this article is the policy decision before the council.
Order, please.
The policy decision before the council was to see whether we should increase the preferred minimum staffing level per shift to 11 for our fire department. And, you know, from my perspective, it didn't make much sense for the council to consider that policy decision if we didn't budget adequately for overtime to ensure as much as possible getting us a level to 10. Because without the additional overtime, if you, if the voter did approve the additional fire personnel, then there'd be many, many times in which we wouldn't have 11 on shift, we'd have 10, because some of those people would be covering the shifts to bring them up to that 10 level. So, in order to go from 10 to 11, you have to get to 10 first, and that's what's representing additional overtime expenditures.
Thank you. There are two people still waiting, Reed?
I, I.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Can't stand.
I didn't see you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Besides, they'd like to hear my voice. Two things. One thing is, safety first. In order to, if the fire ever gets to my house, I'd like to have them have a full 14 force, so they can send me the full amount. If we vote on this, on the positive side, we'll have one step up toward the 14 that is the national average. Now, depending on Hudson, Manchester, and all the other towns around us, is, they have their own problems. They may have the same, a different fire at the same time. I think we should vote to keep three firemen and their overtime, and whatever things are, so it'll go up at least one. And next year, I'll be up here voting for the next level to go up two, if we can. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the whole council. I totally get how this is less expensive, even though it says overtime, this is less expensive. And I'm going to make sure I talk to everyone that I know in Londonderry to explain, this is less expensive with this overtime than if we just started four people. So, that is loud and clear to me. So, thank you. Thank you to the three. I know two of you who said yes to this, that you got that, that this is less expensive, and we're going to gradually move in. I think this is brilliant. Now, just a question, if it is seven cents on the tax rate, if we're looking at 200, 300, 400,000 dollars homes, that's not how much my house is worth, that's okay. We're talking about like 25, 30, maybe $40 in the next year, right? Quick, is that right? Forty-ish. So, basically, for a tank of gas, we can get four more firefighters. Is that right? For half a year? For half a year, 40 bucks a tank of gas for four firefighters. I say thumbs up to that. Good job.
Anne Gaffney, 28 Tokenell Drive. I just wanted to address for a minute the whole national standards issue. I don't care if the national standards are based on lots and lots of different towns. My fire chief, in my town, is telling me he needs 14 firefighters, and we're arguing over bringing it up to 11. I'd like to move the question, please.
Second? All those in favor of moving the question? Opposed? Question is moved. In excess of 100,000 from the land use change tax in the conservation fund. Currently, 100% of the revenue received from the land use tax are placed in the conservation fund. This is a citizen's petition. Mr. Farrell?
Madam Moderator, I'll motion for discussion, Article 10.
Thank you. Mr. Frida?
Second motion?
Thank you. And the petitioner?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jay Houli, 25 Yellowstone Drive. And I apologize for the wording. I had a little difficulty there, but I think you can thank Bart, actually, for the way that finally came out.
Okay.
This year-
Also, do you want to apologize about the number of people here, or? No, okay.
Okay. You were right. This year, Londonderry taxpayers have an opportunity to redirect a portion of the land use change tax to the general fund for use in paying town operating costs. It's a modest change that attempts to strike a balance, and I would urge voters to support it. Currently, conservation funding has approximately $1.1 million in the account, and these funds will not be in any way impacted by this warrant article. This has an impact moving forward only. On average, the land use change tax has increased that fund by approximately $180,000 per year since the 1996 vote to move it into the conservation fund. Using that average, if this article were passed, the breakdown would be, for 180,000, 132 would go to the conservation fund, 48 would come into the general fund. Anytime that the land use change tax is at a level of $100,000 or less, it goes only to the conservation fund. Had this article been in place since we initially started putting land use change tax into the conservation fund, out of the $2,610,000, which all went there, $1,762,000 would have gone there, and $847,000 would have come to the town for general tax relief. We've obviously got a lot of competing issues. There's no shortage of places we could put money, and in this economy, I think it's reasonable to redirect a portion of the land use change tax, so that it might be used for other purposes such as police, fire, highway, and the other items before us tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Johnkis?
Yes, the Budget Committee, by a vote of six to one, recommends a yes vote on Article 10.
Thank you. Discussion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mike Speltz, 18 Sugarplum Lane. I'm going to recommend to my fellow Londonderry residents that they vote no on this article, and I'm just going to make a couple of quick points about the land use change tax, tries to explain why I'd recommend that. The purple on this graph that you see in front of you here represents our land use change tax receipts by fiscal year, and as Jay said, it averages about 180,000 a year. However, in any one year, it varies wildly. So, given the wild variability of this tax, and given a very important link between this tax and development, the state has elected to allow towns to treat this tax in a special way. That is, since 1998, Londonderry, along with many other towns, have dedicated this tax to their conservation fund, so that as the town developed, they could use the income from the land use change tax, and that's where it comes from, it comes from development, to offset that development by protecting other open space in town. In the upper right corner, you see a map of Londonderry, and it's not real big and clear, but that map represents the open space plan that the task force recently completed work on. And the green in that, which doesn't show up very well, it's kind of pale, but it constitutes over 60% of the land that's in the open space plan. And then the orange-colored areas are land, is land that's in the open space plan, but currently is unprotected. So, for example, this beautiful orchard that's right behind us here across the street could be houses just as easily as it is apple trees and pumpkins. So, the message here is that we've made great progress in protecting our open space, but we have not yet finished the job, and the best way to do it is through this land use change tax, because when we can use the land use change tax instead of passing bonds, we don't have to pay interest on it, and it ends up costing us less. So, the bottom line for a voter is, do you want to use this to buff up the undesigned fund balance, that you can fund some of the articles that we've been talking about, or, setting aside the merits of those, do you want to continue to protect open space? And in my view, this is a good investment. This is something that doesn't wear out. We don't need a maintenance trust fund, we don't need a capital fund to replace it. Once we protect the open space, it's protected forever. And the amount of money that you would save in an average year, given the scenario you see there, is about $3 or $4 on a $300,000 house. It really isn't that much of a savings, but it can make a difference over a long term, because we can collect this tax over a long term and make the investments in open space. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you.
Mike Brown, 5 Carousel Court. And I'm going to apologize to my friend Mike in advance for disagreeing with him on this one. I'm sorry, Mike. I actually think that it's time for this type of a policy change to actually be brought forward and implemented from a personal standpoint. Folks like me have done a pretty good job of beating up the council and Budget Committee about maintaining as stable a tax rate as we possibly can. A lot of the discussion that's taken place over the last three years during the significant recession we've been in and continue to be in at this point in time, we've heard a lot about revenues declining across the board, whether it's motor vehicle permits or other receipts that the town receives to help offset the tax rate that the residential homeowner pays for. I have been a supporter of open space, passionate in a lot of ways, a person who actually brought forward several of the previous bonds that have been approved, but over the last, the course of the last couple of years, I think it's perfectly okay to reassess whether that's the right way to go. I think Mr. Houli actually has come up with a relatively reasonable compromise, where the current balance in the conservation fund at 1.1 million is retained for the purposes, the good purposes of what Mike is speaking to. The Conservation Commission will continue to receive annual receipts from this tax, but the town will also receive a portion, revenue sharing. And I think it's time for folks like me to step up and say that it's certainly okay to have this type of policy, because it strikes a reasonable balance between the competing needs of the town and the revenue that's limited to meet those needs. So, I support this article, and I'm sorry, Mike Speltz.
Greg Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. I oppose this change in policy, as the previous gentleman mentioned. One, on a policy basis, because it sets a precedent for using special taxes to fund general revenue, which I object to. I also object to using conservation, special conservation land that is not paid by the general taxpayer, but by the developer and the new residents, which discourages them, I hope, to be used in the general fund. I want to see this money kept for conservation fund. I deeply regret that we didn't have the money to buy Woodmont Orchard before this debacle of a planned community, of which I totally object. I want to see this defeated. I do not want to see special fund revenues being shared with the rest of the town budget. Thank you.
Martin Suge, 17 Whibleton Drive. I was on the open space task force, and if anybody has read the report, we're pretty close to what we ideally would like to have for open space. If I remember the report correctly, it was around 39% of the land in town, we're currently around 33%. So, with the amount of money that we have in the conservation fund, we can purchase additional land, crucial land that comes up in the future. I'm in support of this article, because I think one of the things that happens as we develop in town is that the town side doesn't see some of this money, and the taxpayers doesn't see some relief from the development. I think this is a small step forward in that direction, although I'd like to see it take one more step, and that's establish a stewardship trust fund, as we'll see at the northwest airport development come out of current use, and also Woodmont, is that we set aside some of that money as a stewardship, so that we can take care of the other properties in town, because one of the things that came out very clear was that a lot of people don't know where any of this stuff is, or what they can do with it. But I think this is a reasonable step to take, to use the conservation impact fees, so to speak, and develop some relief for the taxpayers in the town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Deb Levens, 105 Gilchrist Road. I'd like to take a few moments to share a little history and philosophy, and I don't need to go into a lot of details, because a lot of you have been here since this has been going on, but the current use program was established in response to an economy that was causing land to be taken out of open space. And the, our town officials realized in the early 90s that this is what was happening in Londonderry. They started the first open space program, and concurrent was that, a vote to take that 100% of the land use change tax. It was the only money, the mainstay of our open space program for several, many years in the 90s and early 2000s, whatever. We got bonds those middle years. We now know that in these times, it's not appropriate to do bonding, and we've come full circle, and those land use changes are really integral to keeping our open space program going. I'd like you to note, for the public, I don't know if this got in the papers or not, but the Conservation Commission did vote last fall to donate $50,000 of this open space fund to the, I'm not sure exactly how these years work, but I think it will go directly to the 1213 general fund to pay for debt service, and then we decided, we also voted 5% of any land use change tax coming in in fiscal year 1213 to the general fund to go against debt service. Personally, I'm in support of maintaining the status quo. As you've been shown, land use change tax is very uncertain. Many projects take years to accomplish, and while a large number of projects bring, well, a large project will bring in a lot of money, it will be over a long period of time, and not every project that comes to the table will actually provide the mitigation that it should. We work with developers, but they don't always want to put open space and protected land on their development. That's where this money comes in. It comes in handy. It behooves us to have funds ready to pursue opportunities to compensate for the loss of those acres on the large projects. Our open task force, space task force, did a fabulous job of identifying additional properties that we should be looking at, and I feel strongly that the funds acquired through the land use change tax should be put back into land to make up for the land that we have lost to development. That development will be there in the tax base to bring in taxes. One final thought, we must remember that- One final thought, we must remember that the individual space projects come in all sorts of packages with all sorts of requirements. Some of them need to be done really fast. It's very likely that we could lose them. My father-in-law, Bill Levens, who many of you knew, used to say that there's, you usually have one chance at a piece of property, and if we don't have funding for properties, we may lose things. Thank you.
Greg Carson, 19 Tokenell Drive. Just have a quick question. With the developments at Woodmont Orchards that was just mentioned about how we need to, ooh, save space, there's going to be a massive amount of development change. I mean, I've heard as much as, you know, $20 billion over 20 years or whatever, which would seem to me that, you know, a significant amount of land use change tax will be coming in. So, what I'm interested in finding out is if we don't do this, you know, or if we do do it, you know, if there's this windfall in the, in the program, if we don't do it, does all that money just accumulate, and then it's restricted, and we can't take it back out? Okay? So, that's first. So, the answer is no. If it's, once it's in there, we've got to wait for the Conservation Commission to vote it out, or quote-unquote, donate taxpayer money. That's a new one on me, but back to the town, that's a little hypocritical, I think. So, if we do do this, though, and there is this windfall over time, anything in excess of $100,000, which seems like there's only a couple of spots down there where it's below $100,000 in pretty bad times, anything above that is what we'll do, is basically revenue sharing with this particular program, the 40%. So, 40% of a billion-dollar development, you know, you figure tax change, you know, there's several hundred million dollars over a period of time that will come back to revenue to offset tax, our tax property rate. I can't figure out how that's not a winner for the people who live here in Lundary. I really think everybody should support this, because this is money back in our pockets for something that we're not actually even doing, so. Okay, thank you.
Once again, Al Baldassal, 41 Hall Road. I'm not going to expand on what, I agree 100% with what Mike Brown said, and also Greg Carson. But I wanted to touch on something real quick here, before we even think on any type of land trust. I want, I'm hoping our lawyers here, and we discuss this fully in perpetuity, and also under common law, when you turn land over to trust funds, and what goes on with this here in the background. So, keep that in mind when you hear that scam catch that goes on and that stuff. But anyways, what I wonder on this open space, you know, they've done a great job in this town on open, open space. We've protected some good land here. But what we also did at the same time, we took away the demand, or we made a demand on land. So, projects like Woodmont and all these other big projects that are over by the airport, we pushed the cost up of the land, okay, and make it tough, where you're going to get top dollar for land. I think we, somebody said it earlier, that we've already tied up enough land. Now, our land costs have settled down, whereas the more and more you tie up this open space land, God bless the landowners, but they reap the benefits, not the taxpayers. We don't reap anything for maybe 10, 15, 20 years down the road, so keep that in mind. This is a great article. Thank you.
I have to say, and I, can I ask who made the petition again, the citizens petition? I've already lost. Okay, thank you, if you don't mind. I think for me, it's a little hard to swallow at 40%, because I, I'm torn. On the one hand, it seems great that my tax rate might go down. On the other hand, 40% that is what we're going to be keeping, right? We give 60% back? Is that, I just want to make sure I get that. Do you mind? Thank you.
With your permission, Madam Moderator? Thank you. Okay. The first $100,000 each year coming in in land use change tax will continue to go to the conservation fund. After that, if there is any amount in excess of 100,000, we then begin to share it. And I'll give you a quick breakdown. If you had a year you only got 50,000, 50,000 goes to the conservation fund. 100,000, 100,000 goes to the conservation fund. Let's say we have a great year, 200,000 compared to the average, $200,000 comes in. 140 goes to conservation, 60 flows towards the town. Bring that all the way out to 500,000, which I think is nominally 510, is the highest single year we've experienced. I think that was 2006. If we had that, following this formula, $260,000 would go to conservation, $240,000 would come to the town.
And why did you pick 40% that would stay after the 100,000? Why not gradually, if I can ask that question?
It was complicated enough to read, so.
Okay.
No. It just seemed, get it all in there with the lower numbers, and then begin to split it when it gets higher.
Okay. I guess then I will say that at 40%, I'm not going to be able to vote yes for this, but if it comes back with a smaller amount gradually, then I think that I could support this.
Every time I get up here, I have to turn the microphone. Pauline Karen, 369 Mammoth Road. I support this article. It's not as if the Conservation Commission is not going to be getting any money. They're collecting the first 100,000, and then a percentage after. Mr. Speltz, at a meeting that I attended, estimated that over $700,000 would come into the land use change tax from Woodmont Orchards alone. That's besides other developments. And the Conservation Commission isn't getting shortchanged. Thank you.
Mr. Frieda?
Thank you. Just as a, just as a guide, we took the numbers that, of land use change tax from 1997 through February of 2011, and if you applied Mr. Houli's formula to those years, the town would get 32% of the land use change tax, and conservation would have got 68%. So, because of the first 100,000 going to them, they actually do get more than, you know, 40%.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Paul DiMarco, 30 Holstein Avenue. I, too, support this citizens petition. I am a, an avid user of our, our conservation areas here, especially in the Musquash. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Speltz and many other members of the Conservation Commission that I know personally. I think they do a great job, but I have to disagree with what he said. I think the, if, if the petitioners were being selfish, they would have proposed 100% of this go in. I think the threshold of $100,000 really assures that at any given year, even in our worst years, you're always going to see something going in there. And then, then we see a sharing type of agreement after that. We kind of take the edge off, off potentially the taxes in the following year, because we'll have an undesignated fund balance that could be directed towards projects while still funding the conservation fund, so that we could purchase new land as it comes available. So, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Yeah, just as a point of information, the Woodmont property is in current land use. The vacant land by the airport, the property owners have opted not to place that in current land use, so they are currently paying taxes on fair market value, and if that property's ever developed, there will be no current use taxes assessed to that property. Just to make sure we clarify the record. Thank you.
Ann Champa, 28 Wedgwood Drive. I just heard a figure of $700,000 approximately for the land use change tax for Woodmont. Could you first tell me what that, what portion of the property is that for of the Woodmont Commons development? Is it just for the Woodmont Orchards? Or does it include the Esti Woodlot and any other properties?
Mr. Farrell?
Just, in the conversation I just had with the, with the town manager, he advised me that the assessor, Karen Marshon, and the assistant assessor have not yet put a value on that land, so the town does not have an official number. I've also been advised that it will come out in pieces, if I understand it correctly. If the planning board proceeds with the master plan, as the individual site plans come in and that land comes out of current use, that's when it will happen. So, it depends on how they bring the site plans in and how they develop that land, but, and that will happen over the next period of years that they propose to do that. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so, Karen? Yes.
I'm getting a yes from Karen.
Okay, so, if, the master plan has already been submitted. It hasn't been accepted yet, but once that 65 days starts from the portion, from that point on, and it gets accepted, say, for example, it gets accepted, not rejected, when does, is that the last point that this can be, this type of amendment can be brought up again and would apply to Woodmont Commons? When the master plan is accepted, or when portions of that plan, for example, the different maximas of, are being developed?
Yeah, just for clarification, should the voters determine to change the formula? It takes effect on April 1st of that year. So, theoretically, the taxpayers or the voters could change it every year, so whatever decision they make, it becomes effective the following April 1st.
Okay, but if, at what point is, is the land changed? You know, the land, it, does it come out of current use? The whole entire property, all at once, or different segments of the property? Since this is a PUD, and it's going to be developed separately?
There, there are different rules depending on what type of developments you're dealing with, so it's not that easy. I thought you were asking previously also, could this be revisited? And it, this entire concept can be revisited year to year, so that's correct. But trying to explain how Woodmont Commons specifically would come out of current use would be way too complicated to do.
Okay, does it, if we vote this down now, and the PUD gets accepted in 65 days after, I mean, it gets approved 65 days after it's accepted, and next year, we vote to put a portion of the land use change tax towards the general fund, can that be applied to future development at Woodmont or not? Because it's...
They're disconnected. They, whatever rule the town meeting sets in terms of the disposition of current use funds is separate and distinct from when a plan gets approved.
Oh, it is? Okay. I just want to make sure it wasn't dependent, the timeframe wasn't dependent on the master plan, since it's something new? Okay, and is, we don't know yet approximately how much it would be. Another thing is, I'm unsure about how is amount per acre determined for, you know, the, the change use tax? I mean, how is it determined? What? Is there some formula per acre when it comes out of agricultural resident, agricultural development for something else?
Karen Marshon, assessor for the town. We look at each parcel and its market value.
Karen? Karen, can you use this one?
Karen Marshon, assessor for the town. When property comes out of current use, it's determined what the market value is of that property at the town, at the time that it comes out. So, Woodmont is not going to be developed at the same time, so you might have 20 acres being developed next year, and maybe 30 acres a year after. So, it's going to come out on either a lot by lot or a section by section, and that current use will be, that penalty will be determined on what market value is of land in Lundary at that time. And the 700,000 that was used as a number here, they've paid $7 million for property on this side of the highway currently, and that's the Esti property, the Andy Mac property, and the Woodmont property.
For how much, did you say?
Seven million.
I thought that was just for Woodmont Orchard.
10 million, 10 million.
Yeah, okay.
10 million, Andre? We were looking at those numbers yesterday. 10 million? Yeah, 10 million, and 10% of that is your million dollars. So, it was $7 million just for the Woodmont property. So, that's where the 700,000 came from.
Okay, and the industrial property on the east side of 93, that's not, that, we're not even concerned with that, correct?
Well, part of that is in current use, and part of it's not in current use.
Okay, so that wasn't included either?
That's correct.
Are there any other properties?
I believe that that's way down, way down the line anyway for being developed, so, not that I can think of, they have about other properties, but they're not in current use.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Thank you for explaining it, too. I was unsure of how it was determined. Thanks.
When I sat down, it was suggested that I come up and offer an amendment. May I do that to this article? It's just a number I'm changing.
Okay.
So, it would be, do you mind, it was 40%. I would like to change that 40% to 80%. And then I'd like to speak on it so that it makes sense why I'm asking.
Do you have a second? Yes. Okay, let me read it as, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provision of RSA 79-a:25, Roman numeral four, to place annually 100% up to $100,000, then 80% of revenues received in excess of $100,000 from the land use change tax in the conservation fund currently. Currently, 100% of the revenues received from the land use change tax are placed in the conservation fund.
Thank you. I, I don't know everyone in the room or where people stand, but I've heard both sides. Those that do not want to see a single cent be taken from what we're putting into conservation and use for town use, to those that really want to see some effect of our tax rate if we were to be able to put some money into the general fund. So, because I'm a compromiser, this is the rationale for this. For those of us that want to see money that is put into the general fund, and I feel as though this could be revisited, if we feel like the, the 20% over, you know, after that 100,000 is too little, that we could revisit this in, in years that come, for those that really want to see the money stay in the conservation trust, then they could probably stomach if 80% stays and 20% goes. So, the reason I'm bringing this up, and I'm putting all my cards on the table, is that at 80%, I feel like we could all agree on it somewhat, as opposed to the 40%, where we really have two camps on either side. That's why I offer this.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
The amendment, yes. My understanding was that this original wording...
Turn the mic around, please.
Dave Ellis, 1 Wilshire Drive. My understanding was that this original statement of 40 was a compromise between moving the money from this, from the change use into conservation, and moving a larger amount into the general fund. 40% is a good compromise. I'm strongly opposed to changing that number.
Hi.
Greg Carson, 19 Tokenell. I just, a couple of quick things. On first, you know, what this fund actually represents, and I think, let's see, one, I think there's only one person that's sitting at any of these tables that was here when we actually established all of this stuff, when I was vice chairman of the budget committee, when we came up with this idea, not because we wanted to be all green and, you know, tree-huggy about conservation. This fund was established, and the purchases that were made, so that we would reduce the amount of taxes that we would pay on our property tax, by reducing the number of acres available, so that people wouldn't build houses on them, so we wouldn't have more kids in school, so we would keep the taxes down, okay? So, over the last 20 some-odd years that we've actually been doing this, we accomplished that goal. And as some of the other speakers had said, we're pretty close to have gotten all of what we need in town. But what we do have, though, now, is this revenue generator. And if we change this in the amendment, what we're doing is trivializing the amount that we'll get back, particularly over the next several years, through the fund balance. You know, some of this development may happen pretty quickly, and some of it may be a long time out. Let's try it at this rate, so we don't miss the opportunity. And then if it's too much that we're taking out of the, out of the fund... And then if it's too much that we're taking out of the, out of the fund, we can come back and change the number next year. But this number, that the 40%, is probably a good place to start. And I would recommend maybe next year we revisit it again, because maybe it would be actually better to up it as opposed to lowering the number. So I would strongly recommend that everybody vote against this amendment and leave it the way that the sponsors, the budget committee, and the town council all unanimously support it. Thank you.
Mike Brown, Five Carousel Court. I do speak in opposition to the amendment and in favor of the original articles presented for similar reasons that I presented before. I, I think we have a reasonable, and that's, that could be debated, but I think it's ultimately a reasonable compromise that's in front of us. 100,000 guaranteed to continue to flow to the conservation commission, retaining 1.1 million in the balance. And then after the 100,000, a revenue sharing component, and I think it's very reasonable. So I would, I would request that we not support the amendment and move forward with the original article. And I believe this, this was supported not unanimously, but 5-0 by the council and 6-1 by the budget committee, which is a relatively high number from our elected body. Thank you.
Mr. Houley, before you begin, I'd just like to make one comment. If you're leaving, remember to take your card and your ballots with you. Don't give them to anyone. Thank you.
Jay Houley, 25 Yellowstone Drive. I also would speak in opposition to the amendment, doing 100,000 and then 80,000 after that. I would suggest if you think that level of funding is appropriate, to simply vote against the article altogether, if you'd prefer to see the money go to conservation at that level. I would also observe that any money going to the general fund, the town council could elect to use for conservation purposes. So it's not prohibited. In the conservation fund, it is prohibited for any other purpose in the town. If it goes to the undesignated fund balance or general fund, it could still be used for conservation or other purpose as determined by the town council and the voters at a future date.
Thank you. Mr. O'Keefe?
Madam Moderator, I vote to move the question.
Yes, correct. Do I have a second?
No.
All those in favor of moving the amendment, raise your card. The question, I'm sorry. All those against, signified by raising your card.
Moving it.
Moving, we're moving.
I agree.
Against moving the question, okay?
Now, now move.
All right.
Vote on the amendment. Vote on the amendment.
We're going to vote on the amendment. All right?
So you want to vote on the amendment?
I'm going to read the amendment again. I'm going to tell you that the amendment says 80% versus 40%, excuse me, percent. And all those in favor of the amendment signify by raising your card.
Give me yours.
And all those opposed, raise your card. The amendment fails.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of moving the question, signify by raising your card. Those opposed, we move the question. Article 10 will...
Reconsideration, restriction.
Okay. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration? Thank you. Those opposed? We've restricted the amendment and, um, and the article.
I'd like to ask that we move Article 12, that we speak to Article 12 before we speak to Article 11?
Okay.
Have you voted on Article 10 yet?
Yes. We have moved Article 10 to the ballot. Mary, do you have a second? All those in favor of moving question, Article 11 to follow Article 12, signify by raising your card. Those who are against? Hmm, close. John, what do you think?
Hand count. Hand count.
All right. All those in favor of doing Article 12 before Article 11, please raise your hands. All right. Those opposed, please raise your card.
We won. We won. I think we won. I think we won. Yeah. Anybody got some dice?
Does it support for gambling over there?
Never say never.
I heard that. We have a resolution against that, didn't we?
Okay, opposed. We have 53 opposed.
Yeah.
49, 4, 53 against. So we are taking up Article 11. Article 11 reads, "To see if the town will vote to establish pursuant to RSA 35 colon 1, a capital reserve fund for future equipment replacement at the Cable Access Center, to raise and appropriate $200,000 for the said purpose to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance for this purpose and to designate the town council as agents to expend. If Article 12 passes, this article is null and void." Mr. Dolan?
Madam Moderator, I move Article 11 for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. Frieda? Mr. Karen?
The town recently discovered that voters never legally established a special revenue fund for cable revenues. Therefore, cable revenues, expenses, and fund balance have been moved to the general fund. The council recommends that cable expenses should remain in the general fund and be subject of the same funding justification and prioritization for public funds as all other town needs such as police and fire protection. The council does recommend that a portion of the fund balance generated by past cable revenues be transferred to this new capital reserve fund to plan for future equipment replacement at the Cable Access Center.
Thank you. Mr. Jankus?
Uh, yes. The budget committee with a vote of two votes for, five votes against recommends a no vote on Article 11.
Thank you. Discussion.
Mary Sors, Two Gale Road. I would urge people to vote against this article. The cable, we have been voting for the past eight or nine years to establish a cable revenue fund. We know that now that that wasn't a legal vote, but it has been the expectation of our town that, that we would create that fund using the revenue that is generated by the people who use cable in this town. And that fund was specifically for the cable service provider that we have right now and allows us to pay the salaries and buy all the equipment and maintain the building that LACTV is held in. So this, this only pays for the equipment. It doesn't have anything to do with the salaries of the, of the people that work there. It is a self-funded, or I mean, a zero impact to our town if we allow the cable funds to be used to pay for the cable serv, the cable department. You know, I'm not being very articulate, but I use that service, I, I believe in that service, and I believe that we need to maintain it the way it was and the way that people have voted for it for the past eight or nine years. So I would urge people not to vote for this one and to vote for the next article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Tom Proventure, 75 South Road. It has come to my attention that this, this needs to be voted against. This amount allocated is just not enough. Needs to be, uh, it needs to be done as it was in years past.
Greg Warner, 10 Pendleton Lane. I am completely opposed to having the town council putting their hands on money that I specifically pay through my cable fee to establish the Cable Access Center and all its activities. This is not a town activity. This is a cable subscribers' activity. And I do not, also do not want to see the Cable Access Center services decreased, as I have read articles saying that we would be, that the town council would be firing one of the people who is acting as an instructor for our school system, providing instruction to students on the care and feeding of complex television, video and video equipment. As television and video are becoming ever more important in disseminating information to all the citizens, not just the subscribers, it is very important that we be able to teach our children how to use this equipment and how to produce television documentaries, plays, or whatever. I do simply want my money paid through my cable fees to be left in the cable department and not messed with by the town. Thank you.
I don't trust you with my money.
Al Ballbassal, 41 Hall Road. I tell you, this is a tough one here, and the reason why I'm saying this is a tough one. I've got a son now who's doing video for Google, MSNBC, graduated from the University of New England, and actually owe it all to the cable studio. Because if you remember a few years ago, many of the kids used to do a lot of cartoons and other shows on that. And some have gone on to college, and they're doing good things in the video production. So it's near and dear to my heart. But at the same time, I would like to see, hopefully out of Article 12, because I see they, I know they're taking care of the school. On money going to the school, any video stuff for the kids that are needed in that program comes out of there, they don't have to go to the taxpayers. If the town gets their hand in that money, I'm wondering if that's gonna put a restriction if, let's say, cameras break in the school, or something happens at the library, or something has, happens here. Don't we want to protect the interests of that fund to be able to, instead of going to taxpayers to repair that stuff, we have the money? That's all I have on that. Thank you.
Mr. Melcher?
As one of the five people on the budget committee that voted against this, and I'll fall on my sword to talk about the whole cable discussion, and I'm sure the town, some of the town councils will probably follow me. The cable money that you pay on your bill allows Comcast to put wires throughout our town, to use our land. That's what the money is for. It's not to build a cable program or anything else. Even if we didn't have a cable studio at all, you would still pay for that money in your cable bills. It doesn't have, it, there's just been this misinformation being sent out there. The reason that, and actually, I would say, just, the vote on the board is 2-5. We were going to rediscuss this article at one of our meetings and we didn't get time. I was going to change my vote, doesn't matter at this point, but I do believe 200,000 is fair to put in this fund for equipment. The reason that many of us on the budget committee have voted the way we did this year is that many of us would like to see this as a general fund item. And that is the bottom line. People disagree with that or they don't, but just so you understand where the budget committee for the majority came from, that's where we came from.
Jean Jastrom, 19 Horseshoe. The operating budget has all the salaries to run the cable studio, correct? Right now it does. Though what we voted on earlier, so pretty much tonight is nothing but a big infomercial. We're all getting up here, we're saying, we want to vote this up, we want to vote this down, it's, this is nothing. What's voting is next month. What we're trying to do tonight with 133 people to, what, 15,000 voters, 10,000 voters? They're gonna vote on this next month. So why not take all these articles and just allow them to voice their opinion on it and vote on it? I just, I don't understand why we're spending all this time tonight. The end result is still the same. You can turn around, you can't, you can't shoot this article down. You can defund it, but you can't shoot the article down. And now what you're doing is you're taking that right for somebody to turn around and vote on it next month away from them. So I just, I don't understand this whole, this whole process from, from going from town meeting to this. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I might speak to that. I just got my masters at UNH in public administration, and as we were going through the process last year of the vote, whether we're gonna be an SB 2 town, I was taking local government management. And I guess I'm gonna be part of the infomercial, because I feel this is New Hampshire. We get up, we speak, we have to talk about things. And then people are watching at home right now because they couldn't be here tonight or they had their kids. And then we take everything we heard here, because I've had a ton of opinions I never thought of, and I'm gonna go and I'm gonna talk to my friends down the street who have three kids and weren't gonna make it, but they'll be here on Friday. But for me, and the reason I stood up at first, was that I grew up in a little town south of here, or some direction called Pelham. And the only reason I know really anything about local government is when I was in middle school, the director of our cable program came in and did a program with some of us. And I went and I was one of those students that taped the meetings. And at that point, I started learning about things like tax rates and what's going on with the library. And that started my little journey to being, you know, I was a trustee, a trustman, a budget committee member before I moved here. And it's, I just feel like there's so much more than just having access to what's going on in the town. I mean, that's a huge part of it, but there's so much we get out about this. And I'm sorry, I don't know about the numbers, and I'm sure I pay a cable fee, I don't even watch TV at this point, but, because I'm too busy, but whatever it is, I just feel like, let's go with number 12. Yes? Yes. Let's go with number 12. Thank you.
Cindy Eaton, 16 Clark Road. As I said, Article 12 is a citizen's petition article. I wrote the article, I have amendment to it, and my amendment really could use that $200,000, because it, this is coming from the June 30th fund balance. That's the undesignated fund? You call that the undesignated fund? Okay. So I guess, I was hoping someone else would do this. Okay, I'm gonna let Mary do it for me.
I'd like to amend this to zero it out. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay. Cindy, let me read the amendment. "To see if the town will vote to establish pursuant to RSA 35 colon 1, a capital reserve fund for future equipment replacement at the Cable Access Center, to raise and appropriate $0 for said purpose to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance for this purpose."
I got this.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Farrell?
All right, so just so we have all the facts on the ground, okay? A citizen came during the budget committee, during the budget process. What that citizen said was, is that we were not treating the funds properly. At the direction of the council, the town manager went to our town attorney. Our town attorney advised us that that citizen was correct. There was $535,000 in that, in that fund. That money was immediately moved to the general fund. What this article is doing is, is we're saying a couple of things. One is, is that we're now funding the cable group out of the general budget. So with using that money, and Mr. Melcher is correct, they pay a fee to be able to use the right of ways of the town to bring that service to your... of the town to bring that service to your home. What this article is saying is, is we're going to take $200,000 of that $535,000 and put it back in, so that the cable group can do what you're asking them, and what you're asking here to do is, is to continue operating, continue buying more equipment. That's what this is for. So don't be mis, there's no misunderstanding here. We're putting money back in. Just so we're all clear. And we were, we were told that's what we had to do to comply with the RSA's of the state.
Mr. Johnkis?
Yeah, I'd hate to see us take away the opportunity for the voters to vote on the article as it stands. Even though I, for one, Budget Committee member was opposed to this article, I, I like the flexibility of the general fund access methodology to, to fund the Cable Access Center. And I would stress strongly that we continue to strongly support our Cable Access Center that way, and to the extent that makes sense for the voters. I, I just would like to see, from one standpoint, from my standpoint, not to zero this out, not to change the article, put it before the voters at the ballot box as is, and, and let them decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curran?
Hate to do this to you, Bot, but put the legal counsel on the spot. Can we legally do that? I mean, if the money was incorrectly in that fund, and it's been transferred to general fund, can we now create a situation by petition that we put 200 back in that fund? I mean, isn't that, is that contravening the RSA?
No. I don't think that's what was being said. What was being said was, there was a certain amount of money, and now the question is, what's the disposition of those funds? The proposal before the body is whether to establish a capital reserve fund to hold some of the funds that have been freed up. So there's nothing illegal or...
All right. So this wouldn't contravene the RSA?
No, not at all.
All right. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. Maria Newman, 26 Addison Road. I just want to point out to everybody, the current amendment on the table is to zero out this article. If you zero out this article, and then Article 12 does not pass at the vote in March, then you just made it that there's no money for funds for equipment. Because there's no guarantee that Article 12 is going to pass. Am I correct? Right? So then that means, in March, if we zero this out right now, as, as the amendment's proposed, in March, this is going to come up as zero, the Article 11, right? It's going to come up as $0, because we did that here tonight. Okay? If, if that passes, if that amendment passes. If Article 12, then therefore in March, does not pass, and it has a possibility of not passing, it is not recommended by the town council, and it's not recommended by the Budget Committee. So there's a lot of people in March who can vote down Article 12. And that means that the $200,000 that could have possibly been voted on in Article 11 is now taken away. People have the, no ability to pass that through. It's, it would be zeroed out if this amendment passes. So I strongly encourage to not put through this amendment as it's worded right now. Thank you.
Cindy Eaton, 16 Clark Road. You have to be very careful and read the article carefully, because the $200,000 is not for salaries, not for maintaining the building, not for programming. It's only for equipment. And it's my understanding that the equipment line of the cable department budget is usually about $30,000, maybe less. So I really, let me back up a little bit. This is not the same reserve, revenue reserve fund, that we had in place. I know that the other one was deemed illegal, but we, the voters, were voting on that for many, many years. Even the town attorney suggested that the town council address this manner because of the longstanding practices of the community. So I'm asking that, please give me a chance to talk to Article 12. And don't be fooled that this is going to take care of the Londonderry Access Center. It's only going to take care of the equipment.
Greg Carson, 19 Tocana. I just have a, a process question. If this article is amended down to zero, now, if we amended an item in the budget down to zero, the RA and the state law says that no dollars can be appropriated. If it's $1, then the town council has the authority to, to put money in and out. So if that zeroes this out, it says basically at that point that the town has voted to, and this passes, that the town has voted to not establish a capital reserve fund. And then the next article comes up and says we're going to have a special revenue fund. Is it only, does that, does that prohibit us from actually having a special revenue fund? I mean, you know, there is, I mean, other than somebody wrote it differently on the paper here, there's only one kind of fund, the RSA, under the, for capital reserve. So you're going to have one article that says the town is voting to not have a capital reserve, and you're going to have one article that says the town is voting to have a capital reserve. Because by zeroing out a budget item, me, the will of the people, the will of the body is determined, that means no money will be spent on that particular item.
Now, in the context of the articles that you're debating, that wouldn't be applicable, that rule. You have a capital reserve fund question here, whether you're going to establish and fund it. There is also funding in the budget, as I understand, for cable TV services. This was to set aside some of the funds that you have available right now for future purchase of equipment. I don't think those two cancel each other out, nor do I think the, a decision on the part of the legislative body as to whether it wishes to establish a revenue fund would be inconsistent with establishing or not establishing a capital reserve fund or funding cable services in the budget. There are three different things going on, and I don't think...
My question's not really the first one. I mean, the first one, you know, that's, that's not the question.
I don't think there's anything legally inconsistent.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Dolan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There are going to be a couple of ways to zero this fund out. One is to support the, the amendment to change it to zero. That will certainly zero it out. Another way to zero it out is to vote, if the voters vote for Article 12, that also zeroes out Article 11. If you see the language, it says this article will be null and void. So both occurrences can happen. Now, what happened to that money? You follow the money now. There was, there was money in, in a capital, in, you know, excess money in the cable fund that we thought we had. Now, when we found that, through research, that that was not legally established, that money immediately moved to the general fund, and will find its way to the undesignated fund balance at the end of the year. That money's gone. I mean, it's gone from the cable studio. You can't, you can't take old money and, and create a new, a special revenue fund and stick old money in it. So this is really our only opportunity to create a special, it's not a special, to create a capital reserve fund, to put money aside for capital equipment, for cameras and, and other such things. So if, don't be left with the impression that when you get to Article 12, you can take old money and populate that special revenue fund now with old money for capital reserve purposes.
Al Baldassal, 41 Hall Road. I just got it from my own mind on this here, so I understand which way I'm going. First of all, my question is, why did you set up an Article 11 reserve fund versus, a capital reserve fund versus a special revenue fund for Article 12? What's the difference? I mean, I got an idea in my brain, the legislative part of it, but I, I think people, probably, we need to know and understand what the difference, why?
A, a special revenue fund, if approved, is a process where you take ongoing revenues and put them into a separate bucket for a purpose. Okay? So it's an ongoing thing, where you take funds from a specified source to pay for a specified expense. The capital reserve fund is either a one-time, or the voters can add to it at subsequent years, is to put money away in a bank account to pay for specific equipment, usually capital equipment, such as cable equipment replacement.
Okay. Now, taking another step farther. The special revenue fund for the cable department under 12, that takes the legislative body here to spend. If there's an emergency that goes on, if you're not holding a special session, does the, does the town have authorization to go into that special revenue fund, if it takes the legislative body to spend that money?
No. See, the articles, for the council to expend those funds, they have to see the council as agents to expend. Other than that, it's a legislative body decision.
So that money could be sitting there for years, you know, until somebody comes forward a petition to spend that money, right?
Potentially.
Okay. Then, and my last question is on the Article 11 here, is, with the $200,000 that's there, does the legislative body, we're voting on the budget for the rest of the money to pay the positions, the lights, the administrative costs for the payroll, HR, everything that goes along with that? Is that all coming out of the general fund?
No, no. In the FY13 budget, as explained in the Article 4, there was a new line item in the operating budget called cable division. And so the, the annual revenues coming in from, from franchise fees is an offset to the operating budget, including the expenses out of the operating budget, are the operating expenses for the cable division.
Okay. But the council, the government body, could pull money out of there anytime if they, there was a shortage somewhere else. Is that correct?
No, no, not, no. Make it very clear. They can vote to expend funds, but they have to be expended for the purpose of the article. So if the purpose of the article, if approved by the voters, is for future equipment, future equipment replacement, they can't spend that money on a fire truck or a police car. It's got to be for that specific purpose.
Okay. You answer my questions. Thank you.
Paul DiMarco, 30 Holstein Avenue. Regarding the amendment to Article 11, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor of calling the question? Opposed? Okay. We are voting on the amendment to Article 11, which reads, "To see if the town will vote to establish pursuant to RSA 35:1, a capital reserve fund for the future equipment replacement at the Cable Access Center, to raise and appropriate $0 for the said purpose, to authorize the use of the June 30 fund balance for this purpose, and to designate the town council as agents to expend." All those in favor of the amendment signify by raising your card. All those opposed? The amendment fails.
Second.
Second? Okay. We will now, okay. We will move Article 11 to the ballot. Oh, I'm sorry. Where are we?
Yeah, you got to move.
All in favor of moving the question, signify by raising your card? Opposed? Okay.
Motion to reach country. Thank you.
All those in favor of restricting reconsideration? All those against? Okay, we've restricted. Article number 12. We don't.
Vote to move it to the ballot.
"To see if the town of Londonderry will vote to adopt the provisions of RSA 31:95c to restrict all the franchise fees and any other revenue from the cable provider to expenditures for the purpose of all cable department and PEG access purposes. Such revenues and expenditures shall be accounted for in a special revenue fund to be known as the Cable Special Revenue Fund, separate from the general fund accumulated surplus, and shall be expended only after a vote by the legislative body to appropriate a specific amount from said fund for a specific purpose related to the purpose of the fund or source of revenue." Mr. Green?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to move Article 12. It's read. Be presented to the meeting for discussion.
Thank you. Mr. O'Keefe?
Madam Moderator, second this for discussion.
Thank you. Mrs. Eden?
Basically, I presented this petition article, it's a citizen's petition article, because for the past nine, 10 years, we've been voting on this article, a cable special revenue fund article. It supported our Londonderry Access Center. It supported their department, cable department budget that they have to sustain. It was basically to self-fund the Londonderry Access Center. And it could include salaries as well, maintenance equipment, everything. When it was found that this was not legally established, all the money that was collected from franchise fees, from the cable user fees, was then put into the undesignated fund balance. So I assumed that the town council would present this article themselves, because we've always had it. We've always been able, it did not cost anything for the taxpayers. It was self-funding. So since they weren't going to do it, I did it, just not for me, but for everyone in Londonderry. The cable users, which there's about 85% of the town uses cable, they have a franchise fee tax. And you can call it whatever you want to call it, that they're using the lines or whatever, but that fee went to a special cable revenue fund. And until a few years ago, all of the money, the whole 5% of it, was to self-fund the Londonderry Access Center. Now suddenly, they've moved the money, and there's nothing that will fund the access center, except they did put it in the budget.
So doesn't that mean we funded it?
No. You're raising taxes to fund it. You don't need to do that. With the revenues, there was no tax. That is why I created this special revenue fund. And I do have an amendment that I would like to present. If, Madam Moderator, that's allowed, could we hear from Mr. Johnkis and see if there's any discussion, and then we'll do the amendment?
Thank you. The, the Budget Committee unanimously recommends a no vote. Actually, you listen. I'll speak up. The Budget Committee unanimously recommends a no vote. For those in attendance that evening, with a vote of zero to six.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article 12?
I'd like to just get a little clarification. The fees that we get paid through the cable service is basically a fee that the Comcast pays for the privilege of running the lines through the town.
That is correct.
Okay. So then, if this, if this article were to pass, it would fund the whole cable department. Now, if all their costs are met, labor and equipment, where does the excess funds go?
It's, it stays in that special revenue fund.
Okay. Can those funds be used for any other purpose?
According to the language, only after a vote of legislative body related to the purpose of the fund. So it would have to be for that particular purpose.
So, so any funds that pile up over time, is there a limit to how much can pile up into that fund?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So we could talk, you know, thousands of dollars. So my question is that nobody seems to have answered yet, is if we pass this article, what kind of empire is the cable studio trying to build here? Because that's where all the money is going to go, if it stays there. I, I, you know, what are we going to see there? Is, is the studio going to expand and continue to expand, whether the town needs it or not? I just have a hard time with passing this. And personally, I'm against this article, and I'd like to see And personally, I'm against this article, and I'd like to see the cable studio become a part of the town, funded through the town's general funds.
Mr. Carr?
Just a point of clarification. I think I heard Cindy say that with, currently, when the general fund, taxes pay for the cable studio. And just for clarification, is that due to the special revenue fund not being legally adopted, both the revenues and the expense have been moved to the general fund. So there's still no tax impact to operate the cable studio in the community.
Tippers, you took my breath away there, Dave. Mary Soares, Two Gale Road. The, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to, you, you lost it. I'll come back.
Sorry, Mary.
David Ellis, One Wilshire Drive. I got a couple of questions. The original fund of previous years was illegal for some reason? Was that because of the way it was established? Or was the existence of a special fund like this illegal?
In, in, in years past, I mean, 20 years or more ago, 30 even, the town had established a system for accounting for the revenues generated by the cable fee. And then it became just a practice that the community used. A certain amount went into the revenue fund, and a certain amount went into the general fund.
Okay, so the concept of having a fun, a special fund like this isn't a problem. It was just the way it had been established that was a problem?
True.
Okay. The, I'm inclined to agree. I mean, the cable company, Article 11 was covering the capital expenditures, and there is funding in the budget to cover the staff and the operation, and the fees will flow into the general fund. Any fees in future years.
That's what's established today.
Right.
With the correction.
It seems that this article is unnecessary, therefore, and I would like to propose an amendment to it. Am I allowed to amend?
We already have, I've already been given one amendment, so after we take that up, if you'd like to do another one? Do you need paper?
Let's see what the one is that you've got.
Okay. Mr. Jankus?
Yeah, I thought it might be helpful for the, for the, for the folks here and on, on TV, to understand where we were, where we were coming from. It was generally felt by the committee that the current, the current way in which the cable division is funded, put less of a risk on the cable access to be able to continue versus the risk of funding it if this particular article was not to pass. The current method maintains the funding for the Cable Access Center. The new method would reserve funds that could only be used for the cable division, and the concern there was, and I think it was partially brought up, it could potentially accumulate into a very large reserve that could not be used anywhere else versus the current methodology of its, its funding, the Cable Access Center, but it also allows some flexibility. I'm a strong supporter of making sure that that Cable Access Center is in place and well-funded, but I think the proper way to do it is the way it is currently being done, funds flowing in and out of the general fund. And that's the general idea of why the Budget Committee voted the way it did. And I thought that might be helpful for folks to understand.
Thank you.
Todd Proventure, 75 South Road. I think the idea of a gigantic surplus in a cable access station is laughable. Honestly, I don't think that it's going to happen. There's no reason why they wouldn't use their budget. It's just not going to happen.
Currently, Mary Soares, Two Gale Road. Currently, you said that there was 500,000, 500 and something thousand that moved over to the general fund.
535.
Right. And to Todd's point, he was saying he wanted to see it continue the way it had been for years. Well, for years, we've been voting on this special revenue fund, thinking that it was legal. So it wasn't, it may have been, you know, on a, on a, on a, on a, on a financial point, you know, going into one fund and then moving into another fund. It was always, as far as the town was concerned, designated for that special revenue fund. So, you know, it's only been in the past couple of years that, that the town, in my opinion, has been reaching into a pocket that they shouldn't be reaching into to help offset a tax that everyone is supposed to pay, our, our property taxes. And so, I think we lose, when we start doing this, I think we lose the, what we have been trying to do for years, which is to maintain that one fund for the cable services. It may not have been that originally that was what it was for, you know, originally it was for us paying for lines, or them paying for lines and the use of our land. But as a town, we decided that we were going to fund a cable access center. And as a town, we decided we were going to buy equipment and, and hire three people and have, you know, training and have equipment in our schools and have, you know, additional venues where we can broadcast different, different events in our town. And that's all been funded through this, through this cable fund, and it hasn't cost us anything, as far as our tax rate is concerned. And I think to change it now, we will eventually not have what we want. And, you know, I'm tired of people saying we should only get what we need, not what we want. Well, we pay taxes in our town to get what we want, as well as what we need. And what many of us want is a funded cable access center. So, thank you.
Jerry Connor, One Land Salem. I thought I had something to say, but I think she said most of it. When this thing was first started in, what was it, 1983, 84, somewhere around there?
That's correct.
Wasn't the intent then to have a special fund? Isn't that what we've done for all those years? We've had a special fund devoted to the cable station, to the, to the community access cable TV. I mean, that's a longstanding tradition that we have here in town. Why are we changing it?
Mr. Farrell?
So Jerry, we, we did not initiate a change. We were asked a question. It was a legitimate question. The answer we got back was, is that we established a special revenue fund prior to the law that was allowing us to do that. The only remedy they gave us for it was, is that we had to do what we did. We had to transfer the money to the general fund. What the council said was, is that, okay, that, we understand what the community wants, that's not right. So what we're going to do is, is we're going to take $200,000. We want to put it over and give it back to the cable group and say, you need that money, you should be using it. Now it takes $260,000, $260,000 to run the cable department. Okay, so there's, that's $460,000 of the 535. So, we're using the same money, we're just accounting for it a different way. So, we're trying to do the right thing because we were dealt a deck of cards that said we had to change. So it wasn't something we were seeking to do, it was something that we were, you know, put in a position that we had to do. I hope that answers your question.
Well, that did clarify it quite a bit, because that's the first time I've heard that. And maybe that should have come out a while ago. Are there going to be any jobs lost because of this?
The current budget, just to give you a little bit of history and answer your question, is that due to the adverse economic conditions, the council are presenting leading budgets to town meeting over the years, and which were supported by the voters at town meeting. All departments, with the exception of cable, have seen personnel reductions to meet these directives. During the discussion of the FY12 budget, which is last, the current year budget we're in, not, not the budget we're currently considering, the council supported a reduction of staff in the cable division from three to two, but deferred that decision to FY13 out of respect for the cable director who announced a year ago she would be retiring in 2012. So this- So this...